Early.
Yeah.
I know it's one o'clock and we are streaming now.
We got time to transition.
Yes.
All right. Work it, work it.
All right. Dora, we have anyone online?
Not right now.
Right, you want to send an email?
Yes.
Yeah. Oh, do you want that printed here?
I don't want it printed. If you could just pull it up.
No problem. This is for review.
I don't even want this printed. I don't care if people have it. But it was, it's just for the committee.
Yeah.
And for the administration.
Yeah. Okay, so, you know, ready?
Yep.
Let's get started. It is 1:01 PM on October 5th. We're going to go and start our Communications Committee meeting. And if MJ, you can introduce yourself. And see what else there are. Great.
You want me to introduce everybody?
You.
Anybody?
You'd like to, you can.
No. MJ with Communications.
Tony Riley with Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Community Engagement.
Andrew Rattler, CFO.
Jared Bryant, Superintendent.
I'm Margot Bellamy. That's good boy.
Amanda Foster, Executive Assistant to the Board.
Corey East. Sure. A, you present?
Dora Wilson. I am also a board member. And do we have anyone online?
No.
Okay. And I would like to note that Member Carl Jacobs is excused. He let me know he was not going to, he was not available to attend. And Member Les has also said.
Member Halligan is also excused.
Okay. Well, yes, yes. He has a really good excuse.
Yes, yes.
So let's just jump into the agenda. First on the list is the Communications Update.
Yeah, so we, last time we met, we launched our big projects messaging. We've got attendance going on. We started with middle school move. Next on our list is the Academies of Anchorage. And then going to be doing those friendly reminders about where we are with our big projects, just to make sure that staff and families are up to speed. Our internal communications, Hans, started this week. And so he's been digging in to where we are with our internal communication needs. And we're going to be working on a plan to start getting that information down to staff and working with leadership as well. As you know, we've got Corey, who already started with our external communications needs the last month or so. So we're fully staffed and real excited to launch even further into our families and our staff with all the good information about school.
Here we go.
Question?
Yes.
Did I miss C? ASD Connect or?
No, that's, so that's been on hold until we, until they got my team together.
I think I knew that. Yes, okay.
Yes. So that's, that revamp is coming.
And so, do you have one in mind, just so?
I don't.
And my other question is, is it possible for that to, when we, to add the Federation of Community Councils to the list?
For distribution.
For ASD Connect.
Yeah.
I mean, I send it, I attach it to my report each month. But if, if, if that's possible, that would just save one layer of me forgetting.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. And I'll get you that, that address.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions for MJ?
Other than, I mean, the work this communication is doing is phenomenal. I mean, I don't, I don't think I can get on Facebook without seeing something related, something educational, something informing families, sharing with the community what we're doing. I just think it's amazing. I don't know how you guys are doing it, but I'm glad that you're doing it. And so, thank you.
It's a good work.
Yeah.
And I would like to meet the whole team at some point when it all, when it all's done.
Okay.
All right.
Make that happen.
All right. I mean, me and the board, me and the board.
Okay.
All right. Pivot over to Community Engagement. Yes. So you have in front of you a community engagement kind of calendar. We have lots of things coming up in October. I'm working with MJ's team again, I talked about this a little bit last month, to get this on our website calendar, so we can see who's going to be there and who's going to be out in the community. It is available for you online. Amanda, thank you for putting this in, so that you can click on some of the events that are there. So just some highlights. We had a really great event and job fair done by our HR team specifically around teacher and international teacher recruitment that was really successful in partnership with Catholic Social Services on the third. And then we have a whole host of celebrations next week with Indigenous Peoples' Day and leading into the Elders and Youth Conference. So we will be in and around town quite a bit over the next couple of weeks. So there are just some, some information there for you to see. There's lots of, lots of feedback from the community. So in particular, around some concerns that we are just working with these parent advisory groups to collect that feedback, but also make sure they know what supports are there. So, for example, tomorrow, there is a discussion around our tutoring services for our English language learners. So we have that department going to really talk about our process, but also I will be there to really make sure that I'm understanding some, if any, of the barriers that might exist in, from the community perspective, as well as the First Annual Civil Rights Conference that's happening next week, next Saturday that's happening downtown. We have an educational panel in particular, where we'll just talk about Alaska education and our students. So that's there for you to kind of look over. And I also wanted to provide an update on MEACAC. So we do have our first meeting this month and our meeting scheduled for the rest of the year. We are really excited about the community involvement and participation. We had over 12 organizations confirm someone to kind of represent their community already. And then we also have a selection from the ASD side representing different departments. So all the way from IT to mental health and student support. So we're really excited to dig into that work. Our focus is all around the goals and guardrails. So our first meeting will be on the lottery and really looking at what we've done. We know that we've made improvements in applicants, but what we want to figure out more now is about enrollment and what those barriers might be. So kind of the format of what it will look like this year is, you know, we'll talk as an informational session around what the lottery really is and putting that information out there. And then talking with those stakeholders about what really are the barriers to our lottery, to give that and feed what we need to do next with making changes and adjustments to our lottery system moving forward. So that schedule is there for you. And then the last thing that I'm working on in collaboration with the Association of Alaska School Boards is doing a training with cabinet and some of our departments that really go out and talk with the community about how to engage in community dialogue. So I'm working on scheduling that for January. And I'm really excited, especially as we go out and try to collect that feedback around closing schools that Dr. Bryant mentioned, so that we have that for the future and we know what the community actually, what information we need from that. Yeah.
I love this. I love this. Thank you.
We cheer this before.
Thank you. So I will provide, if this works for you, which it sounds like it does, thank you, this earlier to Amanda. We've been adding events kind of constantly. And there's more that have come since then, but so that it'll be there for you and you can see them. And I'll keep you updated on kind of the calendar part with MJ's team, that it's on the front part of the website, but just knowing so you have these links to click and sign up and everything.
So can board members join with the hosting at the First Alaskans Annual Conference?
Sure.
You said that we'll be hosting in person?
Mm-hmm. So it's at Embassy Suites. It starts at 8:30. Yes. It's free and open to the public, but I can also send the flyer and we can get it added.
Do we have to register in advance?
No.
Okay.
If you want to send the flyer to me, I can make sure everyone gets it. I'll put it on their calendar.
And which one was that you were referring to?
That one was the, the elders, elders and youth?
Oh, okay. Okay. Yes.
The elders and youth conference?
Mm-hmm.
I'm interested in that one. Well, I'm interested in the whole conference, but I know I can't do everything. And I'm glad to see that ASD has presence.
I, this is.
So with MEACAC, can you quickly just review the composition of the committee? I mean, I know at one point we had, it's not, yes, it's parents, it's administrators, it's teachers.
Yes.
Can you?
Yes. So we have a very intermixed community. So we have a lot of people that are, work for ASD and have, are also parents of students in ASD. And it became very ASD-heavy, which we were excited about, but we also wanted to make sure that we were focusing on what the intention of the committee was, which was to provide feedback to the superintendent around these goals and guardrails. So we also wanted to target certain organizations that we know we are already partner with, like Covenant House. We have Boys and Girls of Mountain View, United Way. All of these people have confirmed. So we have some separate people that Dr. Bryant and I reached out to personally. We have, like, the Filipino community is, they have a representative. So we've really just reached out and tried to make it a personal touch. So we didn't follow the application model this year. I started in June, so we were a little bit late starting up in August and just wrapping my head around that. But it just seemed like a more personal invitation to join and let the different organizations that represent those communities know that we value their feedback and that we really want to bring them into the process. And it was a really good, it was a really good response.
Great. But we do, there is still employee.
Oh, yes, absolutely. We have.
I don't know how you do that.
And it's kind of represented at every level. So we have middle school, high school, elementary teacher. We have someone from ELL, someone from special education. We even have someone from IT. So we tried to cover our bases there. And I had quite a few people kind of review and make suggestions. And if someone couldn't, we will also have students as well. So I'm talking with our student government at their meeting next week to see, they're great students, but I know they're often tapped to do all of the committees, to see if they also have other students within their schools that they would like to nominate to serve as a student voice as well.
Awesome.
Yes.
And that's my final. If anybody else have a question?
I do have one. Can you send the list of the 12 community organizations?
Absolutely.
Specifically, that would be great.
Mm-hmm.
Can, on item C, Carl Jacobs will be our panelist on that day for that civil rights.
Oh, he will be there too.
He will be there. He will be the board member representative. I'll be, I'll be traveling, but he'll be, he'll be there to do that one.
Okay.
And I'm glad that we have, I'm just happy that we have some district representation there as well. Great, thank you.
Thank you. I am interested in possibly being there as well. Love it. This is a, in additional, in addition to the communications, we're really excited about this community outreach part. So, yeah. For all this work, we appreciate it. This is awesome. Any other questions for Tony? Keep it going. ASD 2024 Legislative Priorities. President.
So, yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Well, right now, the consensus among the board is to keep what we got. We shake it up, make some revisions, keep what we got. That could change. So board members still have time, as well as superintendent still has time to advise on what, on what that's going to look like. Last year, it was the three Bs. And so there's no, there's no desire at this point to change that. But I would like, personally, I want to see some, some in the narrative under each one. I would like to make some adjustments there, but not with the main goals. And there's no, there's no desire right now to change it. So it looks like we're going to be sticking with our three Bs.
And like consistency.
And making some adjustments to the narratives. And I think that we'll know next month how consistent those are with the School Board Association and other state, statewide entities who are now in the process of doing the same thing.
Awesome.
So that's all I, oh, that's all I have. And on that next one, number four, I could speak to that.
Perfect.
So during our last legislative, I mean, our last Assembly, Joint Assembly meeting, they, we, we agreed to work with the Assembly on legislative priorities, a joint legislative priority. So that first meeting, that's a task force. And I think that there's three board members and three Assembly members.
Yes.
And I think it's Les, Bellamy, and I can't remember who else. Oh, Jacobs.
Yeah.
And it's Brawley, Martinez.
Was it Anna?
And that's, Anna is Brawley.
Isn't there Anna Boes or was?
Oh, yes. Oh, she, she's very, she's new on the Assembly. She's in my, she's in my hood. I should remember her name.
Braga.
Braga, yes. And so she will be, she rounds out the ticket. And so we will get together on the 19th to start our conversation. What we have right now in place is just a general, I think we have a Google Doc that we're sharing to get our thoughts in one place, so that when we get together, we can start having some conversations about what those priorities will be. Just a little background information, last year, without us even asking the Assembly, they did do a resolution, a legislative resolution on behalf of the Indian School District related to increasing the BSA. And so they have been, they've been involved with, with the BSA conversation. They've been involved legislatively. And so we expect that this, that this product will be more, would be bigger, in more inclusive of what the district's needs are. So whereas last time it was mostly focused on the BSA, this time I think it would include the BSA and other things as, as the group decides. So, and, and once that happens, I can give updates on the, on the meeting at the next, at our next committee meeting.
I think our work with the Assembly has been very collaborative. We've been creating work, so.
Absolutely.
It's been awesome. So I'm going to pivot back to you if we are, if no one has any questions on the task force. But Legislative Luncheon.
I'm pivoting to Amanda. She's got the control.
And we have the date set. It's December the 8th. It'll be at King Tech again, and it'll be their culinary program catering. MJ, I'll get with your team soon to get a save the date out. And it's all in the works.
And, and I would like to probably give some more thought to, I mean, I know we always invite the legislatures, including the Assembly, but I would like to invite other organizations as well. So, for instance, I know we're working with the CCL group, but we also have, we also have union leaders or, I don't know what to call them. What do y'all call yourselves, Corey? If we invited, if we invited.
See official title. Community. No, no, no. Club of the ASD employer, I think it's Employee Relations.
Employee, if we can invite people, you know, and we do invite staff, but I think if we're, if we're talking about and presenting our legislative priorities, I think it's important. I think it's important that we also invite some, some of our internal folks to this. And so I, I'd like to work with the Chair and with Amanda to come up with that list, much like what, what, what Tony has done with MEACAC, being, to be more inclusive and to make sure that the people who are advocating for us or who needs to have that information will have it. Now, I know we can't, I don't know what our numbers are, because I know we can't go over a certain number.
I know last year we did 50. There was room for more. So I'll check in with them today and see.
See what our numbers are. And, and because I think, I think that's a missed opportunity if we don't have, you know, not just our external partners, but our internal partners at the table as well. Yeah. Okay.
I think that's best said with, like, the CCL work, when we're talking about stuff working in silos, actually work collaboratively, same vision, so.
Yeah.
Sorry, you had something else?
No.
No.
Oh, I guess the next two or three, two. How do I get on this agenda?
Let me go back to the Legislative Luncheon. There was one recommendation that I received from Member Donley, which I thought was a really good one. He said, in talking to some of the legislators, he was asking what we could do to be, to bring them in and, and get more of them to respond and attend. And the suggestion he was received was send the email out, of course, but many of them don't see their emails because they have so many. So do that personal reach out by text, actually. And that's, might be an easier one, so we could maybe split up the list of legislators.
Yeah. And we've done that over time as well. And see, I think what we need to do, board members need to step up their game and contact the legislatures in there that they are assigned to and personally invite them. So when you look at our community assignment list, for me, I would be responsible for Sadler, Grove, Tobin, Shaw, and Craig. That's just, I mean, Craig Johnson, just based on my assignment this year, right? Now, I'm not limited to them. So I think sending an email, I think we need to do them all. Send an email, a text, and then encourage board members to contact and then personally invite their legislators. They're all listed right here. And if they need help, we can step in and help, because I didn't realize, I only had, like, oh, actually, I missed one. I have, no, that's Andy's, that's Andy's group. That's not my group. Because I try to cover for Andy when he's not, when he's not here. But for my group, yeah, I have Gray Jackson, Galvin, Tobin, Dunbar, Fields, Grove, and Mina. So, and I already have relationships with them. I have their texts, their numbers in my text phone, in my, in my phone already. So I think if we can, that's really, we need to do all three. So that's a great idea.
Flyer ready that we could use?
Not yet.
I'm going to get with MJ's team and start getting that.
Okay. So once, once we have that, it would be easy to text the flyer as well.
Or save the date. Save the date December 8th. Legislative priorities.
And what time will it start?
You can, so our meeting, because we'll have our joint meeting that day, it'll be from 9 to 11. Usually people head over, you can be there at 11:30.
So about 3:00.
If you want to go on a tour. Tours will be from 11:30 to 12:00. And then the lunch itself will be at 12 o'clock.
Lunch at 12.
Do you want?
I think we go 10 to 12. I thought, we thought it started at 12:30 last time.
No, we push our meeting back. It starts an hour earlier.
Oh, we go from, okay.
We go to the one.
Okay. Got it.
And are you wanting entertainment again?
Yes.
Like last year? Do we want to see if we can get that group again? I know they were.
Well, let's get, this, try to get a different group this time.
Okay.
And, yeah, we could talk about.
Okay.
Let's group that.
Sounds good. Okay. Any other questions on the Legislative Luncheon? Yep. So the official board superintendent is student photos. Amanda, is that you?
No. Well, that's, that's just, it's there for us to remember to do.
Okay. I wasn't sure if that was.
Andy is not available, Andy is not available, so, and I'm not sure. We'll know within the next.
Is he available on the 17th?
We don't know yet. It's planned for the 17th. He's going to let me know what his travel, what his recovery and travel 17th. So, but tentatively, it's the 17th. So if you get all dressed up and perked up and nothing happens, you'll know why.
But we'll try to let you know a few days before, because I want to make sure we let MJ's team know as well.
As soon as possible. I mean, it seems like we've been trying to do this forever. Right. Any of us here? We don't have a single picture with him. That's just, that's just terrible.
And it's been so successful, so thank you very much.
Bad, bad word.
With the photos. Really good about the last minute.
Bad, bad word.
10 out of 10.
10 out of 10, I say, always.
Okay, so we will move on to the last item on the agenda, Community Engagement Calendar Review. And Margot, you're just, you're back.
I'm back again. I'm going to stop coming to this committee, anyway. Amanda, could you pull up that last email that I sent? Because it's kind of related to this. So as part of, going back to 2020, as part of our SOFG plans, we have, we have always had a calendar, a community engagement calendar, which, which allows us to listen to vision and values from the community. And one of the ways that we've done that is to create assignments for ourselves. And so if you look on the first column, we are all assigned.
Do you want the actual calendar folder?
They have that. They have that. I think, yeah, there's a copy of the calendar there on the paper. So if you look at, if you look at historically, what we've done is we've basically identified in that first column is basically the month and the quarter of the school year. The second column is the board member assignments. And that's really taken from this green list, which is when we reorganize, we, this is one of the things that we do, is assign ourselves different areas of the, of the community. We assign ourselves, we alert ourselves as to who our legislators are. We have schools that are, that are, we are responsible for developing relationships with. And we have community councils that we are responsible for attending. And, and yes, it's a lot, because on some nights, thank goodness for hybrid meetings now, which has become a thing since COVID, we don't have to drive from Rabbit Creek to, you know, Turnagain in, in a half hour in the middle of winter to attend two school board meetings. So we can now, we have some more flexibility to attend those meetings, you know, virtually. And that helps. And so, anyway, so school board members are assigned schools, and, and we want them, we want board members to continue to do their site visits, at least visit those schools. If you can't, you can't get to all of them. I know it's impossible. But for those that are assigned to you, board members should be developing relationships with those schools and should be visiting as often as possible. Community council meetings should be attended. This year, we did a little something different. We kind of gave ourselves backups, but even sometimes the backups don't, like, I'm backing up for Andy, but I already have two councils tonight, so I can't back up for Andy tonight. And so, but we do try to back up for, and when we can't back up, I send a report. So we do have a written report that we can send if board members really cannot show up and present to their community councils. There are Advisory Board meetings that we are assigned, like MEACAC, Native Advisory Committee. There's several, the Chamber of Commerce, the Eagle River Chamber of Commerce, there's several that we are, that we are assigned. And so for those assignments and for those Advisory Boards and Chamber meetings, board members should be doing those as well. In the middle, you will have our community and special reports. Those are monthly rotating groups. They're actually the advisory groups to the superintendent, which we invite to come to us to, to share what they're doing. And on the board is the framework of what we're asking groups to share. So the groups that are identified in this, in, in that middle option, we ask them, we give them a 15-minute block of time to present to the school board using this particular framework. Now, this is not the final framework, because I don't have Kathy's blessing on it yet. We were working on it together, and I just kind of did my little, my little thing last night or day before. But introductions, overview of group, its work, meeting schedule, and membership. Because I think it's important that we look at, these, these are not just internal or groups. These, these groups represent the community and all of the diversity of the community. So, you know, and then number three is looking at current and most recent discussions, including issues, activities, and their programs, sharing how these discussions are reflective of sharing how these discussions are reflective of or, of or consistent with the board's goals, which is how, you know, improving student outcomes or guardrails reflect, which reflect the community's values. And then sharing whatever collective thoughts the group would have, would want. So this would require that this be a group presentation, not group in terms of numbers, but groups in terms of thought. So that we're not asking one person to just come before us and just tell us what they think is happening. We really want to understand what is happening, how it meets our goals and our guardrails, and what is it that they need us, would like for us to know as a board? What input can they give us that, that would, that they believe is useful? So a simple framework, fifteen-minute presentation. Now, the fifteen minutes for the presentation, it is expected during these that the board would have some back and forth Q and A.
During the regular session.
During the regular session, much like what we do with our student report and our military report. So as you will see, the first meeting of the month, the military will always present along with our student advisory committee, our student advisory board. And then we, and I understand that we have MEACAC first, but MEACAC, if you're not ready, so that's okay. We, we, we will, we are flexible. But on the second, the second meeting of each month, you can expect that there would be one of the advisory groups that, that will be addressing the board using this particular framework. So, and then you could see the dates there for our joint assembly meetings. We only have four a year, and so those are there. Other, under other, it's just all the other stuff that we are, that the board has either, is either planning to have a work session on or is, may have already had a work session on. So as you look through those topics, those are topics that, that are under development with the superintendent for a future, for a future consideration for work session. And that is pretty much all I have. And that list, the other list is not complete, because it grows and it grows and it grows. We know, for instance, we're gonna have something on the lottery at some time in the future. And so, which is why I bring this back to you every month, so you can kind of see where the changes are. I don't expect any changes in the middle, but under other, there will be changes as we get through our budget development processes, our, I mean, all, all of the big six initiatives that we are focused on this year. And so we will try to keep the committee as, and the comments committee as up to date as possible. That's all I have.
And I like the proposed presentation framework, because I feel like it would make it easier for the groups that come to present, so they know what information that we're looking to really potentially hear. It's just always helpful to have a framework.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's, that's awesome work.
MJ, yeah.
Yes.
So I just, one for your other Spring Denali awards. I would recommend pushing that to May, because that's when we usually do the awards ceremony.
To May, correct?
Like, it's like, I think it's the first, the first school board meeting that takes.
Got it.
Let's just try not to do it on the same night as the reorg, because that was a little.
Yeah.
Yeah, the reorg really should fall in April, but I think we, for whatever reason, we had to move it to May.
Okay, I'll look into that. But yeah, I just know last year was a little.
Okay, but we'll, we'll make sure not to, oh, reorg, I can put that somewhere.
Would that be under other?
Yeah. And you know, as we, we're moving into campaign season for school board, there are three seats up. And so we will have, we will provide several opportunities for candidates, wannabe candidates to get information about what does it mean to be on the school board. And so those, those are usually, those won't be done by, by, by our board, but they will be done by the state, by the School Board Association. And then there's one, we usually also do a Finance 101, which is a quick overview of, of what, you know, education finance looks like. So people kind of know, have a general idea on the front end of getting elected, what that's, what that's about. So there will be others, things that's coming under, that we'll be adding under other.
Awesome. Thank you. That was great. Anybody else have any comments, questions?
We are at the end of the agenda. Does anybody have anything else that they wanted to share?
Did you talk about your fellows?
Yes, we did. We, or ten hundred percent, that's when you.
Yes, I'm sure you did.
That's when you said ten out of ten, friend.
Okay, I, no need to keep us any longer. Everybody's busy. So motion to be, or motion to.
I'll loop, loop to Jerry.
And I'm gonna say.
Okay.